...content and not personality conflicts or power plays. May we have a spirit of friendship in this room as we work together on our shared mission. Amen.
Amen.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear.
Present.
Commissioner Walls.
Present.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Duckham.
Here.
Commissioner Poleski.
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Good evening, present.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Snell.
Here.
Chairman Chatwell.
Here.
Nine present, we have the quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Moved by Duckham, supported by Mr. Williams. Any corrections, deletions, or additions? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Period. At this time, it is my honor to have an awards and recognition this evening, the Sheriff's Department Award by Wayne State Fidelity to the In-Jail Medication Assistance Therapies Model. Tony, would you please step forward? Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening, Andrew. Sir.
Good evening. My name is Matt Costello. I'm with Wayne State University Center for Behavioral Health and Justice. It's an honor and pleasure to speak with you all tonight. I appreciate the Commissioner Schnell's comment. Again, this is a celebration, and I took that wholeheartedly, and we're glad to be here because this is a celebration. Approximately two years ago, the Center for Behavioral Health and Justice approached a sheriff's office here in Jackson to start a medication-assisted therapy for people with opioid addiction in your community. It was a ground-up bill. There had been really very little programming in this area prior to that. In the short two years in between, the sheriff's office has embraced this program with its other stakeholders, advanced correctional care, the in-jail medical provider, as well as Victory Clinic Services, the community-based provider, to start a full-fledged, full-running, full-range, best-practice model of opioid treatment disorder inside the jail. As we think about the complexities of that, think about it also in a time of COVID, when restrictions and access into jails were severely and appropriately restricted because of that pandemic and the influence it had on the jail populations. The Center for Behavioral Health and Justice has developed a model for this program. Our program is based on the four central concepts. First is a screening tool initiated at the booking process, where every new book is screened at booking for possible opioid use disorder needs. That's critical. It also provides a great data point for us to come back to the sheriff to say, what's the propensity of the problem in your particular jail? The second is the availability of all three forms of medication, that'd be methadone, buprenorphine products, as well as naltrexone or vivitrol. Those medications are available for the doctor to use as appropriate with the people in the Jackson County Jail. The third and most important element from my perspective, being a social worker, is the availability of psychosocial services. Again, think about introducing those services inside of a jail during a pandemic. It was challenging. Jackson County, however, rose to that challenge and started embracing video visits by our providers, Victory Clinic staffs. So it wasn't just, well, we can't do it because there's a pandemic. They searched, found a solution, and implemented that solution to the benefit of the Jackson residents that are in the Jackson County Jail. The fourth element, and really is dependent upon the success of the other three elements, is the re-entry planning that must take place. A sheriff's office can work their tail off, and they do every day, to get this work done, but if there's not effective re-entry planning, then we've just sent up people to fail. Jackson County, again, rose to that threshold with its stakeholders and partners, and has developed tremendous re-entry planning. These aren't just empty words for us. We also do fidelity assessments with all of our sites on a monthly basis. To reach a certification level requires several elements. The first and foremost is 90% compliance on our fidelity assessment. It's comprised of 13 separate qualitative and quantitative statistics that we go through with each particular month. A site must be compliant 90% two consecutive months in a row to be considered for certification. The last element is for a sustainability plan. Jackson County has developed a detailed sustainability plan. In this time of difficulty with budgets, it's, again, a testament to the sheriff's office and the other stakeholders here in the development of that plan. It's not perfect. There's work that still needs to be done in this area, but the sheriff's office has really led the way and spearheaded that. We've been honored that the Sheriff Schute here has attended our meetings and has participated and shared his input, and the value that we get from that is tremendous. We are here to talk to you tonight, just to share that success story with you, because I think it is, one, it's the second county in the state of Michigan that the CBHJ has recognized as certified. To that end, we have a certificate, a plaque, and a coin. If I could approach the chairman and present you with that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Anti-chin filter. Thank you, sir. Thank you. I have to say, it's an honor to be part of your recognition of your department.
It's less than 1% of the jails in the country have a program like Jackson does. Think about that in terms of the number of jails in the community. The CBHJ works with seven different county jails currently, and, again, of those seven, Jackson's the second one to reach the certification level in two quick, short years, with a pandemic, with all the other challenges, with all due respect, sir, with nothing necessarily there beforehand, right? So, again, it's a very complex issue to introduce this kind of treatment in a correctional. I worked 30 years in a county jail in Michigan where we did try and develop this program. The complexities of implementing this program cannot be understated, and it's a testament to the sheriff's office, because if the sheriff's office doesn't say yes, all the support in the community, all the support from the providers means nothing, right? A sheriff has to have the vision and the willingness to look at this program and to implement this program. I tend to run out a little bit, so really, what I should be saying is, are there any particular questions that any of you have for us regarding this program? Because I'd love to talk about it, and I think there's a lot of things to brag about. In the PowerPoint -- see, I didn't allow for any questions. In the PowerPoint presentation that was provided to all the Commissioners, are some of the statistics from the program that you can look at at your leisure. We can keep these updated. If you want future data, we certainly are involved in that process, and we'll provide that data to you. But, again, this is a life-saving program. I -- sorry, sir. We also have implemented a naloxone vending machine within Jackson County Jail. That is a life-saving antidote medication for people who are in the process of overdosing from opioid products. In the first month, there was out the sheriff's office vending machine, distributed, I think, 250 kits. That's 250 potential lives that have been saved by the availability of this medication to be offered to people as they exit the facility, as they come in to visit, as they come in to deposit money in an account, whatever would have them cause to come out to the Jackson County Sheriff's Office Jail. So now I'm going to try and be quiet for a minute.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to point out to everyone that this process began with the prior administration. It's really important for you to understand that. We did have an opportunity to sit down with our partners here, with Wayne State University, and as well as local partners and community partners, and talk with them, and kind of accelerated the process a little bit, and I was happy to do that. I was thrilled that we had the MAT process in place prior to me taking office, because it was one of my goals as sheriff, was to get this in place. You should understand that approximately 80 to 85% of the people that we have in the county jail are influenced by drugs in some way, shape, or form, and that's what influences their crimes. And oftentimes, we see recidivism based upon this continuous open door of drugs going in and out, and in and out, and in and out. This is the important way to fight this and combat this with intelligence, rather than just going out and throwing people in jail and tossing away the key. It doesn't work. And this is the way it's going to work, and I believe that if we continue on this path and we do a couple of other things that we have in mind, that we're going to see some real action here in Jackson County. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it, ladies and gentlemen. And that's all that I have, unless you've got questions for me. Thank you.
Any communications or petitions to come before the board? Please step forward and present them to the clerk. Seeing none, there are no special orders or public hearings this evening. We've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines are as follows. Each individual will state their name, and you have three minutes to address the Board of Commissioners. You may only address the Board of Commissioners once under public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. This is your opportunity for first public comment.
Somebody's always got to be the first one to start. I would like to thank you for having a health director who follows the science and the data instead of political pressure. That was the first thing I would like to say. I would also like to thank you for having the meetings to determine how to spend the COVID funds. I know that that was controversial, and I only came in at the tail end of that meeting, but I would urge the Commission to consider air purifiers for the government buildings in this era of COVID. It seems to me like those purifiers that take out those tiny particles would be a very good investment, and better than investing in personnel that gets no government money down the road, and then you end up having to lay them off and pay unemployment benefits. And then finally, I know that Commissioner Bear has a resolution regarding face masks that I've read and like. I would also like to see an ordinance that no adult can put a face covering on a child except their parent or guardian, unless that parent or guardian has given them specific permission to do so. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Rosemary Tanner, and I'm going to make three statements related to the following issues. The first one is the mask intimidation being placed upon our schoolchildren is unwarranted and unnecessary. The second is the mandatory vaccine passports, et cetera, are fear-mongering tactics to push people into submission when freedom to clearly make a personal choice is being stomped upon. Three, I would like to thank the current health officer for following the data and not blindly falling into submission. My position on these issues have been clearly stated. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Hoagley. I want to thank all you Commissioners for continuing to have an invocation after the Pledge of Allegiance. It's an example that you set. It's a great example that you set for the entire county, and it's a shame that the city government and some of the townships no longer have this invocation. Regarding the ARPA funds, I fully support your plan for the use of these funds, and want to commend you for the fiscal responsibility that you've shown in seeing how these funds are used, and taking advantage of the funds and not just kicking the can down the road. I would like to say, however, that I am disappointed with Mr. Mahoney and how he specifically handled himself and grandstanding and made such a big deal about this, yet at the following study session on the 7th, and then the committee hearings on the 13th, and the special ARPA input meeting on the 16th, he was nowhere to be found. So my question would simply be, if he's going to complain about this and not show up to the meetings, how can he be an effective mayor?
My name is Sharon Hastings. I'm a resident of Spring Harbor Township, and I've been serving on the Board of Canvassers for the past year. I was filling in to complete a term for Nick Fenn, who had had to resign last year because he was running for a political office. Since my term is now expired, I am applying to be appointed again to the Board of Canvassers for the new four-year term. I've learned so much about the election process, especially behind the scenes, and have enjoyed very much working with Amanda Kirkpatrick and her staff, and I would love to continue. And so I want to thank you for reviewing my application, and so if you should choose to appoint me to a new four-year term, I will serve to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Bowen. I am a parent, grandparent of West Rand Jackson Public Schools, and I want to thank you and let you know that I do not want mask mandates imposed upon my children. I want them to be able to make that decision. If you're for the mask, that's great. If you're not, I see the President has got a new grant coming out. It is called the Project SAFE Grant, that will allow schools to receive money that is not given by the states if they follow these mandates. And I was reading on their website, under Section 8A, that the schools that get the grant must promote vaccination, use the mask properly, and have consequences, physical distancing, screening to testing, which could be up to two times a week. And according to the FDA's own website, the swabs are not FDA-approved. They're only used for emergency. Continue use of the swab does irritate the nasal swab with the children having masks, and irritation can cause other breathing problems. It also would be to have the contact tracing put in, and I'm here as a very concerned parent and grandparent to please take a stand, and let's keep our country and keep our amendments and our rights, and I thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Karen Wooton, and I'm an adult, lifelong resident of Jackson County. I'd like to take this time to thank the Commissioners, particularly Commissioner Kennedy, for scheduling the additional county meetings. Most of all, I'd like to commend our Administrator, Michael Overton, and his employees for giving a tremendous presentation. I think I would highly recommend that any citizen that hasn't gone should attend if they have any questions regarding those ARPA funds. My only complaint would be that I wish we had these type of sessions more often with community dialogue with our Commissioners and Mr. Overton and their employees. Thank you very much, Mr. Overton. Well done, and thank you, Commissioners.
Good evening, everybody. Vanessa Molnix from Springport Township. And I noticed on the agenda there is a Health Resource Advocate position listed. I think you guys will be voting on it, so I just kind of wanted to give you some of my concerns. I have not seen the details on that position. I understand it's funded through COVID money, but some of the concerns I have is that that would become a permanent position that would not be funded through grant money at some point, and I also have some concerns about what the parameters of that position would be. I would hope that it would be very focused on COVID in terms of data, statistics, gathering, and that sort of thing, but not -- you know, the title itself kind of lends itself to a broader focus, one being definition of health. There are some entities, including Planned Parenthood, who would have a different definition of health than I would. So I wouldn't want this position to be utilized in a way that broadened its scope, that made it permanent, so that now the county has to provide funding for that, or the schools have to provide funding for that. I wouldn't want it to be used in a way that was contrary to what parents wanted for their children. You know, I think we've seen enough of that on social media, where there's a lot of concern about how the government comes in between the parent and the child. So just, I don't have the details on it, but I would just ask you to consider that as you vote on this, that the position description be very focused on what it's intended for and not be broadened in scope at any point. Thank you very much.
Hi, Jennifer Biddinger. I'd like to start off speaking about the ARPA plan. Many here are concerned about how the funds will be spent. I, too, want to be assured that the money will be spent wisely and be beneficial to our county as a whole and not to special interests. I was not able to make the first public meeting to discuss and hear the input of others about this issue, but we appreciate you scheduling those meetings. But I was disturbed when I heard that Commissioner Mahoney, who appears to be concerned about this issue, was not there, nor at the study session meeting, nor at the general committee meeting on 9/13, to promote good options and to express your concerns. I ask you, Commissioner Mahoney, if you are genuinely concerned about the expenditures, why wouldn't you be at these meetings to make your voice heard? We people need our government officials to stand for what they believe is right, coming up with good solutions through difficulties, and not just to be critical, or worse yet, just go along with their party's marching orders. This whole subject is difficult. I have done some research to seek out organizations that would truly benefit our citizens and the needy, but I'm finding that these good possibilities are not able to or will not accept federal funds. There are corrupt agencies that would gladly take this money for their own benefit. The problem isn't that there aren't charities, or churches, or businesses that would gladly spend the funds to benefit those devastated by COVID. The problem seems to be the restraints of the policies to whom it can be given to. For example, organizations like United Way, they take in millions, and Black Lives Matter. Do you know of anyone who has benefited from these two organizations, as an example, from the millions of funds they receive regularly? Do you know of anybody? I don't. Stop believing that your beloved party leaders want to take care of you. They are the super-rich and power-hungry party now. We need to work together, all of us, to eliminate the tyranny at the top and support our communities and rebuild our businesses. I don't have all the answers. It is not bad to improve our infrastructure and county services for the benefit of our county as a whole. Maybe then we can free up money in the budget to establish good programs that we can give to organizations to uplift our needy. By working together and rebuilding our county, you'd be amazed at what God could help us accomplish. In my personal opinion, we need to turn back to God to lead our path, promoting principles to go against His truths, our corrupting our schools, our government, and our economy. So thank you for leading this meeting in prayer, as other board meetings are choosing not to, and thank you for listening to us. And Lord willing, I'll see you at the next ARPA meeting.
Hi, my name is Andrea Barrett. First of all, I would like to thank the Commissioners who took the time to respond to my emails regarding parental consent and parental rights. Secondly, I would like to thank the Commissioners who stand for freedom and parental rights. In these trying times, we Americans find ourselves looking for leadership with a backbone. 2020 was definitely an upside-down world. If 2020 was a status quo of go-along-to-get-along, we citizens wouldn't be showing up here at these meetings and looking at you Commissioners for leadership. But here we are in 2021, and we need leaders with backbones, leaders who will stand and act, who will act, vocally speak out for freedom and for rights of the people that you represent. Please use your voice, take a stand, and support freedom and respect parental rights, as well as preserve and protect the rights of the people of Jackson County. As Thomas Jefferson once said, "When the government fears the people, there is liberty; when the people fear the government, there is tyranny." I hope you all, as our elected officials, will stand for liberty. Thank you so much.
My name's Bob Lane. Hold on. Better. I'm a resident in Napoleon Township. I don't have anything eloquently prepared like these people do, unfortunately. I just found out about the meeting like 24 hours ago, so thank you for your time. I'm here pretty much to say that masks don't work. I think everybody knows it. Thank you so far. It sounds like that that has been your stance as well. If there's a resolution that's been proposed or that's pending, I'm not familiar with it, so I apologize if I'm going over things that maybe have already been hashed out. Kind of coming in the middle of things here. I've been a paramedic for 20 years. Our hospitals are not overrun. People are not dead in the streets. Our EMS services are not overrun. Are they affected by understaffing? Absolutely. I wore an N95 mask, and I got COVID dealing with COVID patients. Do you think a T-shirt over somebody's face is going to do anything? Absolutely not. This is not about science, it's about control. If it was about science, we would have looked at the fact that we're still dealing with COVID a year and a half later and said, hey, something's not working, let's go back and revisit what has happened, specifically referencing schools. Need to keep masks off our kids and keep our kids in schools in person. I got it. I do have a couple of statistics I was able to pull out and write down. Actually, they're from another meeting I spoke at, and I apologize, because, again, they're a couple weeks out of date. I didn't know the meeting was going on until just earlier. Our kids are not affected. I'm going to send you guys all some information via email when I'm done. Unfortunately, I didn't have the time to put it all on a flash drive and give it to you now, with studies from all over the country, all over the world, that say, schools are not a primary driver of infection, and kids are not affected. So let's look closely, just quickly, I know I only have a minute and a half. How many pediatric deaths have been in the state of Michigan in COVID this year? The state? This is all from state statistics. I can send you that information, also the links where I got it from. 19 pediatric deaths. They define a pediatric individual as 0 to 19 years of age. 19 kids died from COVID output, 2.4 million kids within that age group. Let's say, how does that compare? Hey, I agree. 19 children dying, any children dying, is too many. It sucks, it's horrible. Out of how many 2.4 million? Let's compare that to other things that children die from. This is from the year of 2020. How many kids drowned in 2020? 19. How many were poisoned? 25. How many choked to death? 62. How many committed suicide, which is a horrible thing? 71. How many were victims of homicide? 94. Statistically speaking, your kid is four times more likely to be murdered than die from COVID. How about, oh, you might say, oh, Michigan, we just lucked out. Nationwide, 335, this is from the CDC as of yesterday, under age 18, 335 kids died from COVID. Again, tragic, but how many millions of children are of that age group, 0 to 18 years? A Johns Hopkins researcher went through and researched all of those 335 cases.
15 seconds, sir.
And found that there was not one child that did not have significant underlying health conditions, such as leukemia or other large underlying health conditions. Not one. It sucks that anyone dies from this. Is it a real thing? Yeah. Masks don't work. Keep masks off us and off our kids.
You're out of time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep masks off us and off our kids.
Any other public comment?
My name is Mark Bowen. I work in a flour mill. I wear an N95 mask every day. It don't hold flour back, let alone a virus. They don't work. Keep them off our kids, keep them off us. Thank you.
I want to address the other great health issue we're facing: climate change. In case you don't know, on the Greenland Ice Cap this summer, there are four days of rain at the summit. The Greenland Ice Cap is over 10,000 feet. If you also don't know, should the Greenland and Antarctic ice caps melt, the ocean level would rise by between 270 and 300 feet. Now scientists have said this is going to happen by 2100. I personally say it's going to happen by 2040 if we don't do something about climate change. Now, I was noticing that Consumers Energy is the 38th largest emitter of greenhouse gas in the United States. So we have a major polluter affecting climate change here in our community. And Consumers Energy has a dark money, you know, contribution to political campaigns, Father One C4. And they're promoting these people. This man, whose name is John Danus, says, "Good Christian values mean good Michigan policies." Creating jobs and -- values mean good Michigan policies, creating jobs and promoting Christ." Now what does that mean? Another one, Andrew Fink says, "In Michigan, y'all are Americans, stand up for Christian values." Does this mean dominion over nature? Does this mean the right to pollute our common air, our common water, and destroy our current environmental period, our current epic, they call the holocene? I want to say that Christianity is the problem right now. And I want to ask all the young people, not the people here who've spoken, because they're not going to change their minds, all the young people under 30, I want you to just say no to Jesus, because Jesus and the Christians and the pollution of our environment and the change of our climate is the problem. Thank you.
God bless you with wisdom.
My name is William Hastings. I'm a city resident, and I'm primarily here tonight to thank the commissioners and all the commissioners for helping to appoint and choose an independent-minded county health officer. I think this is especially, especially important in this era of group think and ideological segregation. Many of us in the audience are also trying to work through our local school boards, and there's a lot of ideological group think and lockstep on display there. And I would just only add, finally add, that is my hope that the superintendent is my understanding, they have not been completely respectful of the county health officer in trying to express her views regarding masks, and I hope they learn to try to integrate her views a little better into their own. And one last thing, Christianity is absolutely not the problem.
I'm Stephanie Riley. I came to Michigan from Ohio, which you guys probably don't like, but anyway. I landed here in 1981. I went to school at Jackson Community College, got my associate's degree there, and I've been a nurse here for 36 years at, well, Foot Allegiance and now Henry Ford. With these mandates, I can tell you that the hospital system is going to be in dire distress because a lot of us are leaving because of the mandates, and I don't have a resolution to that. I'm one that's not going to take it for my own fear of health and all of the statistics that are now coming out that nobody's looking at. I think the VAERS are skewed, all the numbers are skewed, and until you guys, until America wakes up and sees and lets these things come through, and that these are actually reported in the actual numbers that are happening, I think that we all need to stand up and stop these mandates as far as, you know, the vaccine and/or masks, whatever. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Brown. I work at Henry Ford Allegiance Health. I'm probably not going to be working there very much longer. So we used to, at our nurses station, we used to have barriers, plastic, we all wear masks, and the other day, and probably because most of the people there have gotten the shot, they're saying 98%, and that's not correct. That is what they're saying on the media, and all that is not correct. They just changed the nursing station where we're just like a foot from everybody, no barriers. So they know, they know COVID is not as rampant, as contagious, as deadly. They are just following the money like everybody else. They're getting so much money for these people getting shots, and it just really makes me very upset. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sonad Weber. I want to start by saying thank you for opening in prayer. Ultimately, God is in charge. I want to say tonight that I do not support the mandatory vaccines that they are mandating on all of us, especially the employers. I believe it is an individual's choice what you put in your body. I don't know what's happened to my body, my choice. I'm fully aware of the pros and cons of vaccines, but in this case, this is not a true vaccine, it is an experiment, and then forcing it into our families' bodies is not good, especially with the side effects that's being hidden all over the media, and it's all being, it's being censored, and I do not support it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings of standing committees. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes-
Don't move.
...of August 16, 2021. Support, I heard from, is that Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Supported by Commissioner Snell. Any questions, corrections, deletions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. We've arrived at the consent calendar. Entertain a motion?
Don't move.
Have moved by Commissioner Duckham, supported by Commissioner Snell. Items for removal? Start with Commissioner Bear.
Item 10, General Government.
So you're removing item 10- Item 10A. Good, understood. I'm going to move that to standing committees, general government. That'll become item 14B, everyone. Did I see a hand up from Mr. Walls?
No.
Thank you, sir. Any other items for further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Polesky?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Snell?
Yes.
Chairman Shotwell?
Yes.
Nine zero?
Nine zero.
Consent agenda is passed nine zero. We've arrived at standing committees, public safety, transportation, chaired by Vice Chairman-
Thank you.
Commissioned by Vice Chairman Kennedy. Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we have no business tonight.
We've arrived at standing committees, general government, chaired by Commissioner Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a few appointments tonight to different boards. Agricultural Preservation Board, pardon me?
Commissioner Duckham, can you turn on your microphone?
It is, sir. Agricultural Preservation Board, we have seven positions. There was no applicants at all. Recommend we re-advertise this position for all seven. Jackson County Parks Board, we have one member at large, term expires end of 2021. Currently, it's vacant due to resignation. Janelle Merritt and Dave Russnell have applied. Janelle Merritt was forwarded from the committee to the full board. I would nominate her.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor of Janelle Merritt, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One last one, this will be the county, the Board of County Canvassers, Republican representative, term expires June of '25. Sharon Hastings is a current member. Sharon Hastings applied, and Sharon Hastings was recommended by the General Government Committee. The second one on the Board of County Canvassers, Democrat Representative, Susan Smalley is a current member. Marla Gilpin applied. Marla Gilpin was forwarded to the full board.
We will take these as two separate items at this time. Sharon Hastings is the one brought forward. All in favor to concur?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Democratic Representative Marla Gilpin is nominated from committee. Is there any nominations from the floor?
Mr. Chair-
Mr. Williams.
I'd like to nominate Susan Smalley.
We have a nomination from the floor of Susan Smalley. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Walls?
Smalley.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Smalley.
Commissioner Duckham?
Smalley.
Commissioner Polesky?
Smalley.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Smalley.
Commissioner Williams?
Smalley.
Commissioner Snell?
Smalley.
Chairman Shotwell?
Smalley.
Missed one. She's coming back.
Commissioner Bear?
Smalley.
Thank you, sir. Susan Smalley's been forwarded. Commissioner Duckham.
That's all the business we have tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Duckham, I will administratively take item 14B, and I'll ask for an explanation from our County Administrator Controller's Office to discussion of this item.
Thank you, sir. I had asked for this to be removed tonight because, as you, as all of you know, we have scaffolding around the front of the building. We've, we're sitting in a building that's over 90 years old, and there are some very large pieces of stone that have come loose, to be frank. We've had a few people, few pieces come down. Thankfully, no one has been injured, but they were significant. We put the scaffolding up, we've had crews out to evaluate the structure. The building, we believe, is sound, but it's some of the stones that are, because it's a steel building built, but it has stones attached to the outside. And so what we've done is, we had, they took a whole lot of pictures, and I believe you've seen some of those, showing the tuck pointing and some stones that are in significant need of repair. And towards that end, we went out and sought proposal. We basically, the company that evaluated our structure and took all the pictures and identified all the areas of needing repair, what we consider more emergency-type repairs, if you will. We sent those pictures and those identified locations out and sought proposals for restoration. There was, it was kind of open-ended, you know, this is one of those, we wanted to do it as soon as they can. We did have one company, of which we talked about at our last meeting, ICC Commonwealth out of Chicago. We have worked with them in the past, and they quoted us $138,000 to do this. They can begin the work November 1st, and they're going to use, they propose using a very large crane that, you know, will sit out in the front or move around the building as it needs to, and I'm not sure familiar, sure if everyone's familiar with these kind of cranes, but they're huge. Think of an 18-story building, it takes a significant crane to go up that high and carry the people and the stones and things like that. Because they will remove some of the stones and put them back on, obviously safely. Now, reason, and we've already had this discussion in our last meeting, it's been approved, and that's therefore why it was on consent agenda. However, today, Mr. Shealy, our Director of Facilities, came to see me about 4:30 and said, "We've had another company come forward, Ram Construction, out of Kentwood, Michigan, and we have done business with them in the past as well, and they have a proposal for us that I believe we should consider." And unfortunately, we're up against the wall, winter's coming, and I didn't want to wait until next month, so I said, "What? Let's pull it off consent, let's have just a frank conversation about it right now." And the reason we want to be able to consider Ram Construction is, they can start in two weeks, not November 1st, but October 1st, and they do not propose using a large crane that would take up space in the street and parking lot for potentially weeks at a time. They propose using the scaffolding that hangs off the, from the top of the building and goes down the building like window washers use. And we've seen that, we've had that type of operation before, they can do it safely and do the work. And again, a very reputable company, we've used them in the past. So what I'm really asking the board to do tonight is not approve the Commonwealth proposal, but I want you to authorize us to expend up to the $138,000 for one of these companies. Ram is still working on their price because frankly, they had included a whole bunch of engineering that we are not looking to do at this time. We are looking to take care of the emergency repairs that we need to do more so immediate to make this building safe and button it all up before the ice and snow starts to create additional problems with the stone by creeping into those. So that's what we're asking for tonight at this point in time. So again, I'll repeat it, we're looking for approval to spend up to $138,000, and that will allow us to engage one of these companies. Obviously, we will speak to both of them and have further discussions.
I would move that. I have a motion in support, moved by Snell, supported by Duckham.
Can we have a brief discussion?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Commissioner Kennedy?
I'm assuming there's been no bid from Ram at this time yet, then? They just expressed interest?
No, Commissioner, they did submit a bid, it just contained a lot of engineering studies on it, which we will do next year, but we don't need that for right now. We just want to get our building buttoned up.
So, but what they submitted through, it didn't show an exact cost?
Right, we're still working through that, and like the administrator said, we just want to be able to negotiate down or up to $138,000, so we can get this started sooner instead of later.
They did submit a price, if I may add, but what it is, they just put one total lump sum, including all the engineering and everything else, so they were looking at $200,000. We aren't looking to spend $200,000, we aren't looking to do the engineering at this time. We do anticipate taking a look at the engineering aspects of all of our buildings here in the spring. We want to go out and seek engineering proposals for that. We believe we can get a much better price if we scale it, meaning add multiple buildings. Okay, thank you.
Any further Commissioner comments?
Thank you for your reminder. I should have asked this at the committee meeting, sorry. The funding for either of these contracts, is it going to come from the ARPA money?
That is our intent, out of the lost revenue portion.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Walls?
I understand the fact that the earlier date in moving forward with this is essential. What we do not want to have to go through is another freeze-thaw cycle, because we'll lose more pieces. The reason I can state that is, I was working with Jackson High at the time that we had to put the new face on it. I know the devastation of that, and that could be very devastating for someone that would happen to be hit with it. I agree with pulling this off the consent agenda, and I will support- and I will support the re-looking at this at this time.
Thank you.
Any further Commissioner comments? Mr. Williams. It's on. The camera's turned towards you.
That is what we're shooting for and that's what we're asking for permission to be able to negotiate that price, if you will. No, it was just one lump sum. They came in at 5 o'clock yesterday afternoon.
Any further questions? Commissioner Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question for you. I'm just curious if there's any wisdom in us looking at the engineering of the building now so that where we don't have to fix things twice? Understanding that there's like time sensitive, that we don't want to have to go through another thaw and freeze cycle and the dangers of falling boulders from the sky, potentially hurting someone. But I also see, see a little bit of wisdom. I'm just curious your opinion on if we should be looking at any other potential issues that the engineering portion of that bid may actually expose to us.
You're spot on, Commissioner. And this is one of the things that we're doing under ARPA, is going out for mechanical and structural engineering. I need to do assessments on all of our buildings just for those exact same reasons. We have, our buildings are elderly buildings and it takes a lot to keep them up. And to start it at ground zero and go after this in an intelligent and systematic way, I want to have the engineering numbers. That's why we're actually out to bid on both those trades right now.
So I understand correctly. You're saying hold off, don't do any work and read the engineering, not do the emergency work right now?
No, that is not correct, sir.
Okay, that's how your sentence was phrased, I believe. Daniel and I understood.
No.
So clearly, clearly what you want is the emergency work done and then step back and do the complete review of the building.
That is correct, sir.
Yes, sir. Feel better? I do now. Any other Commissioner comments? Mr. Bear.
There would be an economic advantage if we did all the engineering first and then the repair. The alternative though is that without doing a repair now, starting as soon as we possibly can, then throughout this winter with freeze thaw, more stones can fall off the building. People can be hit. Some parts of the building, if they fall off, they'll, the building steps back as it goes up. So some stones, if they fall off, will land on a roof over somebody's office. So, yeah, it may cost us a little bit more to repair, remove the same stone, fix the steel and put it back. It costs us more overall, long-term for that. To me, that's worth, that cost is worth the safety of not, of having those citizens hit by 700-pound pieces of limestone.
Any other Commissioner comments? We're posting the vote. Motion is passed.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Standing Committee Human Services chaired by Commissioner Pulaski. Commissioner Pulaski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one item tonight. This is related to the Health Department, Health Resource Advocates. This is a topic that enjoyed a vigorous discussion in committee. And I see that there is a refreshed staff report, I think making more clear and plain the reporting responsibilities of the proposed employees.
Is that a nomination?
I will make a motion to adopt the recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have support? Okay. Commissioner, discussion? Mr. Bear.
I was one of the Commissioners that had many questions about this at our previous meeting. Multiple Commissioners made many comments. I think our comments were heard. They were respected and the changes that I see in these documents, I am in agreement with. So where I was previously very cautious, I'm in support of it now.
Mr. Kennedy.
Just for clarity, I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but it's my understanding that this is being funded with $672,000 grant from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and once it's depleted, these positions will be eliminated, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
As is consistent, just as a little historical perspective, all of our grant-funded positions are scheduled to end if the grant ever ends permanently. So this is a temporary grant that only goes through July 31st. If it is renewed through the state, then we would renew the grant, obviously. But any grant-funded positions in the county, if the grant goes away, the positions go away as well.
Thank you.
Further Commissioner comment? Commissioner Duckham.
I looked through the revised vision of this proposal and it was my understanding Monday that the recommendations, if they're newly suggested, would have to go to the Health Director before it was implemented? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Walls.
This money is coming from the Michigan Department of Public Health to support these people. And I think we have a pretty clear knowledge of the room of what our constituents are looking for. Whose, whose message are they going to, these funded folks, going to bring to the schools and the community? Our message or the Michigan Department of Public Health's message?
Deborah.
The funding only comes from the MDHHS. The guidelines and day-to-day operations come from us. So funding is separate from the directions. We do, as with any grant-funded position, there's guidelines you have to follow. We always have to do reporting on what the people are doing. You report back to the state on how funds are spent. So there's always reporting back to the state on what is being done. So we do have an obligation to complete those reports in order to continue the funding through July 31st. But, but yes, they, it's local. Not all counties receive this money, so we're very fortunate to have received the money. But they will follow the direction of the Health Department.
Our Health Department.
Our Health Department. Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Could you post the vote, please? Yes. 9-0.
9-0.
Pass 9-0. Mr. Pulaski.
We have no further items of business tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 16, unfinished business. There's none to come before the board. We're at new business, the 2022 budget. Administrator Controller Overton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's, as you all know, we've gone through the budget process. We've held our budget public hearings. It's been posted for a few weeks. And tonight, we're asking the board to approve our three separate resolutions to approve our budget for 22. Questions?
Seeing or hearing any questions from the Board of Commissioners, entertain a motion for the Jackson County Board of Commissioners pass Resolution 09-21.23 to establish the 2022 budget for the General Fund and for Special Revenue Enterprise and Capital Projects Internal Services Fund for the County of Jackson. I have a motion in support. Any questions to the motion? Yes, sir.
For all our attendees out there, could we read off what the budget is? For the upcoming budget?
You'd like the whole thing read?
No, just the numbers.
Well, we're going to spend lots of money and we're going to take in lots of money. How's that?
That's always the way, huh? The General Fund budget is...
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that directly in front of me.
May I read it?
Certainly.
Okay, the General Fund budget for 2022 is $48,377,309. Lot of money, but it's also about the same amount of money we had in our budget about 12 years ago. So we're doing, just, we're doing more with really less money if you factor in inflation. So kudos to the committee members here. We're all on the same page and we're watching out for your money. Thank you.
Any further questions from Commissioners? Are we ready to post? 23. What do I do? C-24, I don't see 25. I see it. No, I don't. Where's it at? Capital budget? Move your hands so I can see where I can cut it up. This one? Right there.
The vote is online.
M-E-S. You have B-S-E-S. Thank you. Behind everything. Commissioner Bear. For some reason, it's not coming to us. Yes or no? Yes. Passed unanimously. Entertain a resolution to pass 09-21.22, the 2022 General Appropriations Act.
So moved.
Support. We have a motion in support. Corey and Duckham. Any questions to the General Appropriations Resolution? You ready? Madam Clerk, please post the vote. Thank you. M-E-S. Passed unanimously. Entertain a motion to pass 09-21.24, the Annual Statement of Compliance with Public Act 152.
So moved.
I have a motion in support. Any questions to the motion? Pass 9-0. Item 17B, Equalization Director. Mr. Overton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we have Joseph Van Hassel is, and our, of course, esteemed HR Director, Michael. Joseph has agreed to be our Equalization Director. You want to go over his, just a little bit of his background a little bit, that, Michael? And per state statute, while we may do, internally, the staff does the homework and advertise and interview and check backgrounds and all that fun stuff. Ultimately, the Equalization Director must be confirmed by the County Commission. And, Michael.
Sure. His most recent experience has been with the Mason County Equalization Department, where he serves as the Deputy Equalization Director. Mr. Van Hazel has had over five years of equalization and assessing experience and currently holds an MAAO certification through the state of Michigan. Mr. Van Hazel is willing and interested in pursuing his Michigan Master Assessing Officer certification through the state of Michigan.
Are there any questions before I?
I apologize.
Before I give my mic?
Administratively dealing with something humorous.
You can step over to the other podium there if you'd like. But any questions from the County Commission in regard to the process or the applicant or any of those things? If not, a motion would be in order.
Support. I have a motion in support. Any questions to the motion? All in favor, Commissioners? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Congratulations. Welcome to the team.
Thank you. I look forward to serving the community.
Thanks, Joe.
We've arrived at the second opportunity for public comment. This is your second opportunity for public comment. The guidelines are each individual will state their name. You have two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment. Opportunity may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time.
Don't stop my time yet. Hi, Jennifer Budinger. I also needed to take this opportunity to thank Commissioner Bear for writing this proposed resolution. I'm so thankful for his wisdom and resolve to stand for we the people. I realize it is being reviewed by an attorney, but I strongly ask to support and press towards making sure that this is placed on the October 5th study session and the October 19th board meeting agenda. When I first received it, I was just like reading through it and you can see all over, I just was writing, "Yes, yes, thank you, thank you. You all took score and oath to uphold the constitutions of us and this follows the guidelines regarding the mask mandates and the vaccine mandates and all the things we, we the people, there's so many of us here that are starting to stand up for them. We appreciate that." The last page I wanted to address since we only had two minutes. Jackson County will not allow mandatory vaccinations, mandatory wearing of masks or other face coverings, mandatory testing, contact tracing, use of vaccine passports or differing treatment of unvaccinated individuals in schools, businesses and public places. That is awesome. We need that as soon as possible. I was just over at the JPS school board meeting. They have regressed back to putting on masks. We need to stand as a county. I can't believe they're falling for those slavery tactics and we need these truths to be resolved for our county. And we thank you, Health Department, for standing for the truth. So, thank you so much.
Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We've arrived at Commissioner comments.
Peter Bormuth. I just wanted to say that I agree with people here and their expression tonight about their right of individual freedom, their right to make choices as to whether or not to get vaccinated and whether or not to wear a mask. That is the American ideal. And that is also the right of women to have the right to choose over their bodies. That is the right of women to choose whether or not they want to bear a child. So if you're advocating for individual freedom...
Mr. Bear, please go to the board.
In this instance, with regard to COVID, please advocate for individual freedom when it comes to a woman's reproductive rights. Thank you very much.
While following that, I have to stand up for equal protection of the law for all humans, whether they are in the geriatric, the adult, the adolescent, the infant, or the fetal stage of development. It's all the same baby, and killing children to solve socioeconomic problems is not appropriate.
Any further public comment? Commissioner comments? Start with Commissioner Snell and then Commissioner Poleski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank all of you for being here tonight. It really means a lot to hear the opinion of the public and what you're asking of us. I'm not sure if there's anybody here who will support a mask mandate. I certainly won't. And I'm not sure that we haven't done enough resolutions on it already. I think we've done a couple on this before I was on the board. But I'll be happy to review Commissioner Bear's resolution. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would remind the audience here and the public generally of the two upcoming ARPA presentations. And I appreciate leadership and the administration in scheduling these additional informational meetings. One being this coming Thursday, the 23rd, at 7:00 PM at the Spring Arbor Senior Center. I will be at that one. And then the following Thursday, the 30th, at 9:00 AM, right here in this room, to discuss how we might spend those monies. And I would also like to echo Commissioner Snell's view of thanks for those who have attended to watch how your government works or doesn't work sometimes. But thank you for being here.
I'd like to thank people who showed up. It's nice to see a good audience here and hear directly from you. We can represent you easier when we hear from you. The resolution that I put together, a few people have said some of the things in it the government hasn't even tried to impose upon us yet. And that's right. It's time we get ahead of this. And instead of being reactive... Instead of being reactive, we need to strongly express our viewpoints to the government before they try even to impose these things on us. We need to be preemptive. We've been taking the hit for too long, and figuratively speaking, it's time for us to hit back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't remember names here, but I admire the employees of Henry Ford Hospital that stands up for their rights. You might lose your job, it'll probably get a better one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three quick comments. One, I want to start by congratulating the Sheriff's Department for the award by Wayne County Fidelity to in-jail medication assisted therapies model. I think that is a phenomenal stature to have, and it is a prime example of equity at work, where you look to find a solution that's specific to the population that's having the problem. That's equity at work. The second comment I want to make is I want to thank the concerned citizens about my absence while I was away for a funeral. In my absence from the meeting that I missed, and I think that you can check my attendance record for meetings that I've missed, and I believe that's the first meeting I've missed this year, maybe second. But I didn't miss all of the meetings. I want to also thank the administration for doing what they should have done before we approved the plan to spend the money that we're spending. That's your money. And also thank you for paying attention and being willing to give input on the way that we spend it, your money. I just wish that you had input prior to the plan being developed. I also wish that the meeting that's being held inside the city was held at night at 7:00 PM like the other two meetings, so we give a fair and equitable chance for individuals who work that live inside the city to attend that meeting as well. I think we're noticing a pattern in here of inability to give equal access to individuals who live in the city, which is, guess what, a part of the county. I'm not for grandstanding. I'm not speaking on behalf of no political parties. These are my thoughts and feelings on behalf of the constituents that I represent. The last thing I want to say is, Peter Bormuth, it is good to see you. I thought for a minute you forgot where the Jackson County Commission Chamber was at.
Other Commissioners? Commissioner Kennedy?
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, too. It's also great seeing everybody's smiling faces not behind masks. Secondly, what we're all talking about here tonight is our constitutional rights. And our constitutional rights are God-given. They're non-negotiable in this country. And sadly, we're having to stand up and fight for them now. So I commend everybody for coming out here tonight, speaking your minds, standing firm, standing strong, and standing together, because that's what it's going to take. I hear some of you mentioned that you're going to school board meetings, and they need to hear your voices. They need to know. Lastly, I believe in personal choice when it comes to health decisions. And that includes vaccines and masks. And I'll never support a mandate. I'll never support a passport. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? I'd like to take the time to remind everybody that the Apportionment Commission meetings are Wednesday, September 22nd, Wednesday, September 29th, Thursday, September 30th, and Wednesday, October 6th. They're all at 5:30 PM, and they're held in the Commission Chambers right here, which everybody in the county has access to, just like everyone in the county has access to Leone, and everyone has access to Spring Arbor, and everyone has access to the county tower building. I'd like to remind everyone of that. If you're truly worried about government, that apportionment is important, because that's going to decide who's representing you on your County Board of Commissioners for the next 10 years, and where those districts shall be aligned, and how many shall be up here. It would be very helpful for us to receive as much input as possible. The only other thing that I have is I'd like to thank everyone for attending. I find it very helpful that we have citizen attendance at our County Commission meetings. My goal is not to be able to set a speed record here, and I'll tell you that when we don't have public comment, we get awful, awful close with this meeting on being able to get in and out of here in less than 20 minutes. So I really appreciate you being here and keeping track of us. I also want to commend our Sheriff's Department for stepping up and following through on a system of mental health initiative and chemical dependency initiative with the Wayne State certification. I find that to be very helpful and appropriate. And again, it's an example of the county stepping up and doing what needs to be done, and not grandstanding and taking credit for other things that other people have done. The County Sheriff's Department crossed two administrations and did an excellent job on receiving this. And as you heard, one of two in the state of Michigan and less than 1% across the nation. Sheriff Schutey, Chris, I really appreciate your guys' help, the minutes and notes that we get now weekly from your office to let us know what you're doing and when you're doing it is most helpful and appreciative. With that, we have no closed session this evening. Entertain a motion to adjourn.